Okay, so we're gonna call this meeting to order and start out. We know that the other two members won't be here tonight, so it'll be just the three of us. So we could go over, establish desired outcomes by the agenda and recognition of groups and individuals, and then go to the consent agenda. So if you guys want to introduce yourselves. Greg, wanna introduce yourself to start out?
That thing's just really loud. My name is Shelley Wilson, and I'm the elementary special ed coordinator for WSCSU.
And I'm Greg Stoller, I'm the Step Behavior Coach.
Perfect. And then do you guys wanna jump up and introduce yourselves to?
Oh, I'm Katherine Mason, I'm the school counselor here at Oprow.
Perfect.
My name's Laura Howe, and I'm a parent from Academy.
I'm Katie Wilson, I'm a parent at Oprow.
Okay. Alright, and there is child care going on over next to the front door for anybody who needs that, or as they come in, if anyone looks like they're lost and want that. The teenagers are thrilled to have a community service hour. So then do we have a motion to approve the minutes, the agenda, and the warrants?
Seconded.
Discussion. All in favor?
Alright.
Okay, perfect. I think if it's okay with everybody, we jump right into the presentation with Greg and Shelley.
Okay. Give me one second.
I think he was gonna have to move.
Do we need to move, Greg?
No, no, he's gonna pick us up.
We're going to have to sign.
From here, is alright? The format of everything, in case I get lost.
So, good evening. My name is Shelley Wilson, I'm the, my role in the district is the elementary special ed coordinator for WSCSU. I also, with Greg, oversee implementation of STEP supports in four of our WSCSU elementary schools. So I was asked tonight, Greg and I were asked, to do a brief overview of behavior supports in the Brattleboro Town Elementary Schools. So that's what we have for you. We're hoping to be about a half an hour, and away we go. And if any of the principals wanna jump in with information, I am happy to have that as well. So what I focused on, what Greg and I are gonna focus on in this presentation are different systems that we implement here in our Brattleboro Town to support students with their behavioral, social, emotional functioning. So I'm gonna focus on multi-tiered systems of support, which I'm gonna refer to from now on as MTSS, and positive behavior interventions and supports, also known as PBIS. And then Greg will, I'll turn it over to him, and he'll talk more in depthly about supportive teams for educational progress, which is our STEP services. So, multi-tiered systems of support, throughout, I've been in this position analysis year four, and this is probably my third or fourth time talking with the board, with different boards, about what MTSS is. Brian Bittner, our literacy coach, has presented several times on the academic side, and Paul Smith, our curriculum department. And so tonight, I'll just talk briefly about what that looks like for behavior. MTSS, by definition, is a whole-school, data-driven, prevention-based framework for improving learning and social outcomes for every student. So all of our district schools here in WSCSU are in various stages of MTSS implementation, and we've been working on this as a district since about 2011. Some of the hallmarks of successful MTSS implementation include gathering accurate and reliable data, correctly interpreting and validating that data, using data to make decisions for students, establishing and managing increasingly intensive tiers of support, and evaluating the processes at all the tiers to ensure that the system is working. So, in a very simplistic view, you know, you're gonna see a few of these triangles throughout this presentation. The notion here is that all students will receive some coordinated instruction in social and emotional and behavioral learning and systems. As you go up the triangle, some students will require a more intensive level of support to achieve that academic and social success. And then at the very top of our visual, there are a few students who will need a much higher level of support, usually in the form of individualized intervention in order to, you know, achieve the greatest success. So the behavioral systems in MTSS very closely mirror academic systems, where we look at data, we take data, we look at data, and then we use it to help kids, in a simplistic way. So this slide I've presented at our grade level meetings for classroom teachers over the past couple of years, and I thought it would be useful here. This is not at all a comprehensive list, but these are some examples of behavioral interventions that you may see within an MTSS system of support. And many of these, if not all of them, are going on currently in the Brattleboro Town schools. So at the bottom of the triangle, we have interventions for all kids. And so these would include, you know, the following things there that are listed in green. Most importantly, clearly defined, taught, and reinforced behavioral expectations. The introduction of evidence-based practices in classroom management. This is something that I certainly have pushed with classroom teachers and offered them support and professional development on what those are, just like we use evidence-based practices for academic instruction. We wanna make sure we're using evidence-based practices for things like classroom management. Academic differentiation, so that is a teacher's, classroom teacher's ability to meet the needs of all learners within the classroom environment. I would say anecdotally that a great many behavioral difficulties actually start with students not being able to access core curriculum. And so that is a place where it's necessary for teachers to adapt to the needs of our learners. And those adaptations may not come natural to a teacher. We need to, and that's part of some of the work I do, is helping teachers with those differentiation techniques so that we can include as many kids as possible in the core. Other interventions, what include, yeah?
What's an example of a technique that you would do?
Of academic differentiation. It could be things like flexible grouping within a class. It could be things like modifying the amount of work that needs to be done as opposed to, you know, if there's a set of problems, let's say, in a math lesson, a child may be expected to do less or more based on their needs, and that can be directly related to behavior. Kids feeling like they can't do something is often a cause for, you know, some of the acting out behaviors that we might see in a classroom. Things like environmental modifications, where kids sit, who they're next to, what the classroom looks like, et cetera. Many of these things are incorporated in the evidence-based practices in classroom management, you know, that have been presented to classroom teachers a few times now at grade level meetings. As you go up the triangle, again, some students will need the interventions at the core level, but they will also need the core plus more. So that could include an intervention like check-in, check-out, which is used in PBIS, which I'll talk about in more depth in a minute. It could be more targeted behavior coaching with students. That's something that our planning room staff do, guidance counselors, HCRS clinicians, STEP staff. There's many adults, trusted adults in the school that can do that sort of targeted work with kids to help them, you know, essentially coach them through an issue so that they can help find a solution. Social groups are done in many of the schools with school counselors and other staff, lunch buddies, things like that. Report cards, also known as simple behavior plans. So these can be done in a more informal level for some kids. And then again, a couple, two of the three town schools have a planning room, which can be used ideally in a proactive way to help give students non-contingent reinforcement, like taking a break in a proactive way, using it in a positive way. And you know, and sometimes it can also be a reactive intervention if a kid needs a quiet place to do work, they're having a hard time in the classroom, et cetera. And at the very top of the triangle, you'll see very individualized behavior interventions for kiddos. And that could include something like a functional behavior assessment, which is a behavior assessment usually done, we'd like to have it be done by a board-certified behavior analyst, which we employ three of them in the Brattleboro Town Schools, plus Greg as well. Creating individualized behavior plans for kids. Those could be, you know, more comprehensive plans that are longer and a little more detailed, that involve more people. That may be carried out by a specific paraeducator at the tier-three level. And also, the tier-three level could include wraparound services. So that's collaboration with, obviously, parents and other outside agencies like HCRS, or sometimes DCF, in order to really make sure that we have a comprehensive team working together to help the kiddo with their behavior. Oops. So just some quick examples of school-wide behavior expectations. You know, these are expectations that are going on in practice and principles of these. I'm assuming these are, these are where we're at with, under the PBIS umbrella, and also Academy School has STAR behavior. So these are the expectations that are taught to all kids. The, you know, school rules is kind of a misnomer. We really try to focus on the behavioral expectations. And it's not a one-and-done type deal with children. We wanna make sure that, you know, it's not enough to say these are the rules. We need to help kids, we need to be explicit in our teaching of what these expectations mean. We have to practice them, we have to review them often, we have to monitor how kids are doing with them, and then reinforce kids when they're doing the right thing. Coming back from a long break is a perfect time. I always tell classroom teachers to go back to September and review those school-wide expectations. And also, as a classroom teacher, you may have more explicit classroom expectations as well. So it's never, it's never a bad idea to be reviewing those expectations with kids on an ongoing basis. Any questions about MTSS for me?
If you went back to the triangle, maybe you can't do this, but what percentage is on few, some, and all?
Well, I wouldn't have an answer for that in terms of like where each school is at. I can tell you that in MTSS and the PBIS models of this triangle, eighty to eighty-five percent, it's generally eighty percent of kids, will respond to the tier-one behavior interventions. And you know, the research shows that ten to fifteen percent will need something more in that yellow group. And then the very top, you know, is generally five-ish percent, give or take. That's the, that's the goal of those, of those systems.
Can I ask the principals, does that seem about like how it plays out at the school? I guess I was, I'm assuming the top one is what correlates with the STEP program?
No.
Oh.
No, I think that what I'm trying to show, well, Greg will talk a little bit more in depth about what STEP is, but STEP was developed as a response to the needs at the top of the triangle, and it's a way in which to provide those intensive levels of support. So yes, I guess I missed my question.
I was just wondering if that, does that correlate with about five percent of the kids in the schools are receiving STEP support?
Five to seven, I'd say.
Yeah.
We're closer to ten. We're like seven to ten percent?
I have the data for you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have currently seven percent across Brattleboro Elementary Schools are receiving STEP services, which we have seven hundred and fifteen kids, so that's fifty-six students have some level of STEP services. Some contact, not meaning that they're having the full triangle of individualized behavior plans, but they're having some contact with STEP services.
Okay.
I should've just told you that. I didn't wanna take away your fun.
Yeah, well, that's one of my slides.
I know, I did, sorry. Okay, so part two is about PBIS, and I'll talk a little bit about that. PBIS is a statewide and actually a national effort, which is designed to help school teams form a proactive school-wide systems approach to improving social and academic competence for students. PBIS schools use a formal system of positive behavior supports in their schools, and a major emphasis of this PBIS process is to help teach students the appropriate communication and social skills needed to replace problem behavior with more socially acceptable alternatives that will still meet students' needs. So, um, what?
Can I ask how you do that?
Well, I can go into it very briefly, and I would also ask Mark and Jerry to kind of jump in as well. I think that if we go to this slide, so again, we're back to the triangle, right? Where we have universal supports, targeted supports, and intensive supports. So there's, there's the numbers. MTSS, so MTSS and PBIS as systems are pretty much the same. I wouldn't say they're interchangeable, but PBIS is an intervention within an MTSS system. They're, it's, I mean, to be blunt, it's the same idea. And those supports, one of the hallmarks of a PBIS system is taking behavioral data and using that to make decisions on interventions for kiddos. So when students present with a higher number of ODRs, which is Office Discipline Referrals, that's brought to teams within the building, and then those, like I know, is it at Green Street Market? They're called PBIS target teams, maybe the same as well. And those systems are, those teams talk about the behavioral data and then do problem-solving around where, you know, what types of interventions a kiddo may need as you, you know, as you progress up the triangle here.
Like one of the greatest aspects of PBIS is that it creates a common language for your school. So we have explicit, we have a broad range of expectations, safe, responsible, respectful, but then we break that down at each setting in our school. So what does that look like in the hallway? What does that look like at an all-school sing? What does that look like in the classroom, in the lunchroom, at recess? And then we explicitly teach lessons throughout the year to practice and to review what those expectations are.
So the teachers are responsible?
Yeah. Well, the community in general is. But teachers explicitly with their classes, but then the greater community of the school to reinforce that. You're walking down the hallway, and you see a student sprinting down the hallway. Stop, and we have signs throughout the building, and it's, you know, it's a way to review. Let's look at the expectations, what should this look like in the hallway? And then you do a little teaching in the moment, as well as a whole class repeatedly throughout the year.
Just to follow up, there are quick things about PBIS. It's in its tenth year of implementation in Vermont as a statewide initiative. It's also, you know, all across the country. It's recognized as a best practice intervention by OSEP, the Office of Special Education Programs. Green Street is in year eight, and Oprow is in year four. And both of those schools have been recognized as a PBIS exemplar school. And then I just tagged the websites up there if people have, if they're looking for more specific information about those systems and how they work. Okay, let's talk about STEP services.
Well, I'm Greg Stoller, I'm the district behavior coach. And I've been working in the school district now, this is my sixteenth year. And it's my ninth year working in STEP services. STEP was created, quite frankly, by Shelley Wilson and myself nine years ago at Academy School as we saw the need for, we were very concerned about students being placed out of district or in self-contained programs. And our vision was that inclusion is best practice, and that we wanted to be able to create programming that would include every student with any difference, any disability, in as much as they could be in their mainstream class. So we started that at Academy School, as I said, we're in our ninth year. Now we have three STEP programs in Brattleboro Town and one in Guilford. And as I said before, seven percent of the population from Brattleboro Town is having some contact at this point with STEP services. So as I said, what STEP is, STEP is an inclusion model. It's not, well, first I'll talk about inclusion. As I said, I think that our students get the best teaching done by their mainstream class of teachers. And socially, academically, and psychologically, kids do better when they're with their peers, and especially in their own community. And so STEP is designed to support schools in helping those students stay within their mainstream to the best of their abilities. What STEP is not, it's not a program, although we call them STEP programs. You'll hear people say, oh, we have a STEP program. Whenever you say the word "program," people think, well, it's a room. And, well, actually, STEP is a room too. But actually STEP is a service that we provide to the school. And we like to think of it that way because what we're trying to do is take away the idea that we're putting a kid in a STEP program. We're offering the student and the school community a service that will help maintain and support that student within the mainstream. So it's not a place to send students who are misbehaving, although students that do misbehave sometimes do go to the STEP room, but that's not why it's there. And it's not a self-contained classroom. While we might do some individualized work within a STEP room at times, the majority of our students are out in their classrooms for most of the day. That's what we try to do. And we, I don't have the data on that for each student at this moment. When we, at times, we do keep data on that, like what percentage of our students, and how often, how much they're in their class, and how much they have individualized behavioral support with them. So going back to the triangle, as Shelley said about MTSS, what I like to think about STEP is that it's a blueprint for tier-three intervention for behavior. So when you think about that triangle, individual behavior plans, functional assessments, individualized behavioral support, STEP is a model that we can put all those services in to deliver those services in a very pragmatic, evidence-based way. So I just wanna go over the staffing so you know who we have working STEP right now. We have quite, right now, we have four boards, board-certified behavior analysts. A board-certified behavior analyst is a master's level clinician. We have one person who's a master's in special ed, one who's a master's in early education, one who's a master's in applied behavior analysis, and I'm a master's in social work. And I'm also a licensed school counselor and clinical social worker. So we have those people working, oh, and you know, in order to become a board-certified behavior analyst, it's a quite bit of graduate work, and it's an internationally recognized certification. And now Vermont has a license report, and all of our schools have licenses. We have intensive case managers. Each program is staffed by a special educator who has a master's in special education, and their job is intensive case managers, I'll explain what they do in just a second. Then we have paraeducators, and at this point, we have twelve paraeducators that are working within STEP programs across the three Brattleboro schools, nine of which at this point are what we call registered behavior technicians. Registered behavior technicians are paraeducators that have been highly trained. They've gone through a forty-hour training course and passed a national exam in order to get this international credential as a registered behavior technician. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second as well. And then we have PCB interns. Right now, we have three interns, two from Antioch University, and one from University of Massachusetts, who are trained to become board-certified behavior analysts. And they're working in our programs, being trained, using them as a practice, using them as a practical study. So what does STEP do? In regard to behavior, we do what most people think, which is create behavior plans, and based on functional assessments. And that's sort of what most people kind of look at and say, well, that's what STEP does. I want a behavior plan, go to STEP. But we do a lot more than that. We also do a lot of teacher consultation and coaching around behaviors. And just as Shelley was talking about MTSS in regard to, you know, helping teachers learn how to address behavior more effectively in the classroom, that's really STEP's job. Because when I look at it from a STEP perspective, it's not about changing kids' behavior. It's about changing the culture of the school to support every student. And I'm a real big proponent of all means all. When we say that we're going to include all of the students, we have to figure out how to do that. So, you know, teachers, we have teachers who've been teaching this district for up to thirty years, and they still struggle at times with behavior, and so everyone can use a little help every once in a while. The other thing that we do is we supervise and train the RBTs. I teach the RBT class, which is a forty-hour training program for paraeducators. And once they become registered behavior technicians, they're required to be supervised.
What does RBT stand for again?
Registered Behavior Technician.
So I got lost in the acronym.
That's okay, yeah, a lot of letters. But it's a fairly new credential, but it's booming. There's over forty thousand registered behavior technicians on the rolls right now across in the world. And the reason being is that from a behavior perspective, creating a great behavior plan is one piece of the puzzle, but having someone who can implement the plan and understand the language is another piece. And what we found that having highly trained people makes the job much easier and much, much more effective. The other things we do is we do with crises, hopefully not too many of them, but they do occur. From an academic standpoint, as I said before, our, we supply intensive case, case management. Many students that have complex behavioral needs, not all, but many, aren't just struggling at school. Many times families are under stress, or there's psychosocial stress that's going on. So they might need a higher level of case management. A typical special educator will take care of an IEP, run IEP meetings, and, you know, do somewhat, you know, regular contact with a parent. STEP intensive case management is way above that. It can include, you know, multiple conversations, many, many meetings with parents. Academic differentiation support, Shelley mentioned this. It's a key treatment, a key intervention for reducing problematic behavior. If you have a student with a specific learning disability, and you want them to be in a mainstream class, you're gonna need to have academic differentiation. And classroom teachers do do it, they are able to do it, but sometimes you need a specialist to come in to assist, to create specialized programming for these students in order for them to be successful. Again, we also do teacher consultation on academics. So our intensive case manager will provide feedback for teachers around their academic style and their teaching styles, or what their curriculum looks like. And we also do the academic progress monitoring for the students so we can keep track of how they're doing as a case manager, and so we do that as well. So, before I say that, I think that's it. Anyway, this graph shows the out-of-district placements for the Brattleboro Town Elementary Schools since 2009. These are for students that are on IEPs. And this is, this is a graph that shows the percentage of students that are accessing those services since we've introduced MTSS, PBIS, and STEP. So from 2009, we had fifteen and a half percent of our IEP students were placed out of district. And this year, we have five percent of our students, which if you do the math, it's a sixty-eight percent reduction in the number of students that we have placed in out-of-district.
Greg?
Yes?
When you say out of district, do you mean Kindle Farm?
Kindle Farm, the Brattleboro Retreat, Community House, variety of, you know, other places.
Very, hold, yes, I wanna do one more math from budget perspective. Sorry to be maybe crass about it, but what does, what does that represent to us in cost?
A lot.
A lot. Well, I, one particular placement can charge as much as four hundred and fifty dollars a day.
As to be treated.
Yeah.
And if they...
Kindle Farm, I think, is thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. I think it's more, I just heard something so recent. Yeah, it's a lot of, it's not one.
And this doesn't reflect though, this is placements where the school district, or the school, I guess, the individual school has acknowledged, we cannot meet the student needs, so we're gonna refer them to this other school. This is not including people who just were like, this isn't working for us, I'm gonna pull my kid out and put them somewhere else.
Correct.
In fact, these are IEPs, you know, so they have...
Because that's money lost too, although we're not paying for their tuition. We're losing them as a number out of our population, so it's like a lesser...
And this is all, this reflects, these are all places that we're paying.
Right. I'm just saying there's, there is a more money step going on as well with the people who are not chosen by us to be placed out of district, right?
I don't know if you can put those numbers. It's another whole topic.
Right. Right.
But then the other not-so-money type is that, what do you all feel you've seen administrators as a difference in feeling by the kids? I'm assuming that a child who's been, gets to the level that's being considered to be put in an out-of-placement situation, must have strong feelings. I guess I wouldn't assume one way or the other on feelings, but do you feel like this is addressing the child's needs as well as our school's needs?
Well, when, when we send kids away, they don't come back. So, you know, there's different perspectives and different ways to look at this. One is financial, because when we send kids away, it's very expensive. It's far more expensive than if they're in our schools. It's far more expensive than having a STEP service. But the real cost is in these children's lives, because they don't come back. They go. They can, for the most part, for the most part, almost every single one never returns to public school, never returns to their mainstream. They're, they're not successful often, typically, as adults, because they can't get through school. So to send them out to elementary school is tragic. It solves the problem if the student's, you know, involved in the classroom. It will solve the problem if they're out of the classroom and they're sent to another organization, but it doesn't win any good chi in my experience.
I'd like to add to that. Even, even with robust MTSS, PBIS, and STEP supports, you know, through, through my lens, there will still be some children who require more than what public school can offer. And that's, I think that would be across the board in any school district anywhere. And I would also like to say another statement about the data is that since the admin, you know, since the addition of STEP services to the top of our triangle, we have actually been able to bring kids out of out-of-district placements back into the elementary schools. And I think that all three schools have had at least one successful experience, if not multiple experiences, you know. And again, I used to work at Academy, so I was involved in a couple of those transitions, where having that, that extra layer of support in a more comprehensive way at the top of our triangle really enabled a safety net for those kiddos to be able to come and to reintegrate back into a public school setting. It's, sometimes it can be super challenging, but I think that we've been able to do that pretty successfully, in limited instances.
Mark, it sounded like you...
A successful STEP program really changes the culture of the school and the mindset of the school. So it's more of being proactive and working together and finding ways to develop plans to support kids, and that has a great effect on the entire community.
Anything to add to that? I think I have one more slide. So what makes STEP work? As I said, we've said this quite a few times, we really don't change students' behavior. I mean, we end up doing that, but we really change teacher behavior and administrator's behavior in the community. We change the culture, as Mark said, and that's really the goal. Every teacher that works with a STEP kid meets with the STEP staff once a week to go over the behavior plan, go over the academics, to ensure that we are moving in a good direction. And if things aren't moving in a good direction, then we change what we're doing. So being a teacher that has STEP students in your classroom adds another layer of work that you have to do, but we work to really support the teachers to do that. Again, I talked about the intensive case management. I don't have to go over that again. We use ABA, Applied Behavior Analysis. The reason why we use that is that it is the most evidence-based research to practice in regard to dealing with complex behavior problems. And we like to use everything that's scientifically based, not philosophically based or anecdotally based. We keep data on every student. So if you have a student in the STEP and a parent wants to say like, "Well, how are they doing?", hopefully, you'll be shown the graph of what, how they're doing. And hopefully, you'll be shown, you can be shown that at any time you come in. Yes, we keep the data every day. If you ever come into a STEP room, you'll see piles of papers that are always being put into, and also, everything's individualized. There's no cookie-cutter program. PBIS, by its nature, is rather, it's a broader approach. It's much more of a cookie-cutter. It's like, "We're doing this." STEP is individualized for everyone.
Can you give an example of what ABA is?
ABA is really looking at, it's the science of behavior. So it's really looking at why people do things and how to change the environment to change their behavior. So everyone uses ABA every day. We, as parents, we use it all the time in very simplistic terms, and very simple. I mean, if you stick a fork in a light socket, you get a shock, right? You're not going to do that anymore, right? It's, that's, that's, that's a punishment that, you'll be like, "I'm not going to do that." If you do something good, your parents say, "Nice work." That's a positive thing. And if that works for you, you will do that behavior more. Those are very simplistic. But that's the beginning of where we look at how we're working with kids. But what we really focus on, and I think what everyone likes to focus on, "I don't want this kid to do that. I don't want this kid to do that." What we focus on is, what do you want the kid to do? And we teach that, and we support that. And that's really what's to help with STEP, how we, how we work. It's just, it's, it's teaching. It's like, when you have a kid, you say, if they do math wrong, you don't say, "Don't do it that way." You teach them how to do it, and that's what we're doing. And so we're using, you know, complex behavior requires, you know, much more broader thinking about how we're going to change the environment, and we might have to be doing things in a very, it can be just much more complicated. I don't know if I answered your question.
Some. Can I give you like a specific example, and you give me some ideas of what you might do?
Well, that's the thing. I really can't, because the thing about ABA is that to give someone kind of shotgun advice, like, "What would you do here?", the way that we do assessments from an ABA perspective is we do a ton of observation. We don't do any testing, like, you know, a psychological test. We look at the environment, we watch, we see what's going on, and we see what's maintaining the behavior, and then we create a plan based on those observations. So I really don't like to have people say, "Well, what would you do here?", because it puts me in a weird position. It's like, it's being too gentle.
It depends.
It really depends. But for example, I'll give you an idea in regard to tier-two stuff that STEP sometimes does. So in an ABA, in a PBIS perspective, they use what's called a check-in, check-out program. Check-in, check-out is a, basically, you have a specific staff member who's your check-in, check-out coach, and you create a plan around certain behaviors that you want to see. So for example, if a student, completing their work, that's the goal, okay? So we're going to focus on helping the student learn how to complete their work. And so they would have a report card that they would bring to their coach that was sent from the teacher, and they'd go and check in. Teacher would say, you know, "Did you reach criteria?" The coach would say, "Hey, you did. Good work." And there'd be some sort of incentive or some sort of reinforcer that comes from that. And that, that's very basic. From a STEP perspective, we do that as well, but we do it on a much more higher level. The level of coaching that we give to kids in STEP, like, STEP students are seen multiple times a day, and they're seen, you know, just on a regular basis to get lots of coaching. Sometimes those check-ins, check-outs are happening every 20 minutes versus half a day or a full day. Does that help?
Yeah, I just do really well with examples and specifics. So I'm trying to think of like a specific examples, and I'm guessing I'm not the only one.
An actual...
Yes, thanks.
And the students move on, so there's no confidentiality. Student who was acting a part of it in class, and seemed, when we looked at the data, he was getting kicked out of class. Looked at it, it was most often at the beginning of math. So STEP had the data, we looked at it, and said, "Well, he struggles in math. He needs more support in math." And that was one issue. But one of the things that was happening, he would get so frustrated with his math, he would get into a power struggle with the teacher, and would erupt and get, get, get kicked out of class, and would often do it like, like early adolescents do by making a scene, could slam the door, get up, you know, big disturbance and so forth. So we created a plan, and you remember this?
Of which one?
You remember, you remember. So we created a plan. And what was the first thing they stopped? It was the way he left the classroom. Because when he left the classroom, he would slam the door, or he would cuss, or do something really, really elevated, you know, the kid was frightening and made a lot of people feel unsafe. So we addressed that first. So the initial response was, "Well, we're going to reward him for leaving the classroom appropriately." Now, that, that is somewhat counterintuitive, and this was, this particular teacher, at that time, that was really counterintuitive. It was like, "No, you're rewarding him for doing something wrong. You know, we're rewarding him for exiting correctly." And it took a while to, to actually, you know, create that change in, in teacher mindset. But once we did, and I think it was a two-week period where he would get rewarded for exiting classroom appropriately, well, he bought into the reward because he chose it. It was something he wanted. And very quickly, he would, he would get upset about the math, and he, or whatever, and he would leave the room appropriately. And after two weeks, that was altered. I think we let him leave any time he wanted to, and he got upset, and then you alter that. And then once you correct that behavior, move on to the next one. And they correct that, move on to the next one. And this young man had a, really finished his career at Academy, is successful now in the middle school. He's doing quite well. He easily could have been a kid who we could have lost, you know, without those kinds of interventions, changing the way the teacher responded to the behavior, and just, he very much bought into all the positive rewards. And he was involved with STEP during the year, and then the following year, very much sort of we came out, and by sixth grade year, I don't think he became a STEP at all, none at all.
We do have the opportunity, because we've been doing this for nine years, that we have students that we started with in kindergarten that are now in eighth grade, that are 100% independent and doing very, very well. So there is some real, at least at this moment, it's more anecdotal, it's parents and checking into the middle school. But it's been really wonderful to see students that, you know, we saw the growth through elementary school. And STEP does most of its intervention, and not all of it, but most of it in the younger grades. There's research that shows that if a student after the end of third grade is still having very significant behavior problems, we could call those problems chronic. And just like I was told that if a student's not, hasn't learned to read by the end of third grade, it's a, it's a sign of real difficulties educationally, it's a, it's a big sign for problems later. So we put most of our efforts into the younger grades. Not to say we don't have kids in the older grades, but...
That was one of my questions. Do you work outside of, with the STEP program or any of these after elementary?
No, we don't.
So middle school and high school is completely different? Man, I know that's not our purview anyway, but curious.
What's the percentage of kids that, that, that are able to leave the STEP program?
Boy, I wish I could figure that out.
That's a good question.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Well, they all leave eventually.
Yes.
100%.
But say that you have them in first, your second grade, and by third grade, they're not, or whichever grade.
Well, I hate to give a number, but I'd say most of them.
Most of them.
Yes, they're very, very successful. And that's why we've been able to, that's why the other principals have been very eager to have these programs. We presented, Shelley and I presented at CEC, Council for Receptional Children, a national conference a couple of years ago about STEP, and we were very well received. And then we presented with Andy at Best Institute two years ago, and we had a packed place. And since that time, we've had one school district come down to observe and meet with us and help them, to coach them to create a STEP model in their schools. My experience, and it says anecdotally, that when I talk to people in other school districts and I tell them what we have, they're very, very jealous in regard to the amount of resources that our teachers have for behavioral issues in school.
When we, when we did that interview, a field review earlier this year, overwhelmingly, talking to other administrators and teachers, they were just, couldn't believe the amount of the programming and the support that we had in place to, to handle the situations that all schools face. So I think it's a model program.
I had sent an email earlier. Were you able to get any photos of the STEP rooms for us to see what that looks like?
I didn't.
I think I just, I didn't realize that there was also going to be Greg, so I had just sent it to you, but I'm sorry, I should have sent to you Greg, I kept asking for these.
Well, in general, can you describe the STEP room? Is it a normal room or is it something special?
It's, it's, we had a, we had a parent come to Green Street recently. I worked at Green Street for the whole first semester. We had a PCBA out on maternity leave. And I'm not sure what was going on, but she wanted to see the STEP room. And she walked in and she said, "This is it?" I said, "Yeah, this is it. It's a room." You know, they're all different because due to spacing or whatever, but it's just down the hall. I mean, I'm not, you're all here, and you can walk in and take a look.
It's, there are classrooms, classroom spaces that, you know, have, you know, healing jerks and social emotional stuff, and, I mean, I don't know, there are, knowing probably going down, which is what you said, would be confidentiality today, because I don't have them prepped. And because when you walk in, there's a poster with students that are receiving services, and they have their names on there because they're, and they're things that they're working on. So that would be my concern, like, tonight, if I don't have, be able to bring everybody in there with names of students on the wall would be uncomfortable for me.
I encourage, I encourage you guys to go and look, you know. I used to, when I worked at Academy, it seemed like every year the board came through, and they'd all come in one big swath into the room and introduce themselves, and we'd talk about what we did, and then they'd walk out. I don't know if you guys still do that kind of thing, but...
I've done that the whole time I've been on the board.
Yeah.
But in, in general, the answer is it's a normal room, it just has a few more social things, charts or whatever, but it's just, it's a quieter room that does, it's not used as a classroom, it doesn't have a whole bunch of other kids in it.
No.
No table, chairs, whiteboard.
I have heard some concern from parents about a space that I guess is used for de-escalating kids who are emotional that seemed upsetting to some parents. Do you know anything about?
Well, each, each space has...
Like a closet-ish type of...
Each space, I mean, they call it something different, but it's sort of like a standard, what people would call a timeout area. Like at Academy, it's just kind of a, it used to just be a partition, but we had students that were, you know, very violent, and so it's basically just a, there's no doors or anything. The kids can walk out. It's, it's just a space to have privacy, and if a kid's having a crisis, they don't have to be out in public doing it. Here at, here at O'Brode, the timeout area is at even...
That's to the left, right?
Yeah, it's just a space. It's just an indentation in the wall. It's just a space. So there's no door. You know, in Vermont, there's rules about restraining seclusion. We, as a district, do not do seclusion. We never would put a kid in a room where the door's shut. So, but I'm, you know, I can't speak to people's tastes or their concerns about spaces. Green Street is just two offices.
Right, it's like two parallel spaces.
Right. So it's just different depending on the school, and Guilford has just two partitions.
And when you use the word timeout, that made me wonder, does the child put himself in timeout? And like Andy's example, that the child needed to be able to learn how to leave appropriately and de-escalate is another term you use. So does the child sometimes put himself in the STEP room and in the timeout, or is the teacher?
That's what we hope for. That's like, that's like the, that's high level. That's we want kids to be able to take a break when they want to, and then reorganize themselves, regulate, and get back to class.
I'm wondering if the emphasis that some of the schools have been doing on a trauma-informed practices has had any changes affected in the STEP programming? Because I'm sure that that overlaps a lot of the...
It has, yeah. We do, you know, as a school counselor and a social worker, I have a pretty broad skillset in regard to trauma. The issue... The issue that we have in regard to schools is that, and, is that when a kid becomes really dysregulated and is a danger, or is unable to follow the regular classroom contingencies, we're not able to really actually, we have to maintain safety, and then we can do sort of the deregulation stuff and help kids. I got that. It's definitely informs our practice. But the issue with trauma-informed schools is that they're still, we are still the go-to when the kids are in crisis. And our hope is to help them get back on track, have them see the school counselor, and use that time. We're not doing therapy and stuff, we're not doing that. We're all about academics and what we see. But I think we're all very trauma-sensitive in regard to what's going on in our, in our community, with the increased stress we have in our community. We've all seen the effects of it, and we all are trying to be very aware of, while at the same time, educating, you know, 715 kids.
Right, at the same time, we know that there are, there are a lot of kids sitting in our classrooms that have been traumatized, and their behavior is, you know, doesn't warrant STEP intervention. But they're sitting there, and they can be triggered by other students. So as we become more trauma-informed, we realize that, you know, we have a tremendous responsibility to control our most vulnerable students in the classroom, because when they have an episode and act out, strike a teacher, or strike a classmate, or knock over a desk instead of screaming, they set, they can set several kids into a traumatized state, a very, very stressed-out state, create a really adverse reaction, where those kids feel unsafe. So, so we're, you know, we're sensitive to that aspect as well, which just clearly supports, you know, its ongoing need for, for this kind of services kind of program.
I was wondering if anybody out here wanted to have any comments, we don't often have people comment, so. Do you have any questions you wanted to ask?
I have one more, one more.
Oh, you have more, so I can say?
Again, I talked about RBTs and how wonderful that is for us, and I feel like we're really on the cutting edge in regard to utilizing RBTs in the public school. It's been a great boon for us, and it's really helping do much higher-quality behavior plans. And the last thing, and this is the last thing, but it's really the most important in some ways, it's having principal support and collaboration. Just talking about changing a culture and changing teacher behavior, this has, STEP has to be a top-down approach. It doesn't come from me or from the other STEP people, it comes from the principal, valuing the service and valuing inclusion in their school. And as Andy illustrated, working with teachers who may not understand the intervention, but helping them move along through it to help kids be successful. And, so anyway, that's the end of my.
So now, any questions from anybody?
I have a child in fourth grade who's been in and out of STEP since kindergarten, and I don't think I would have appreciated this presentation five years ago when he first started receiving services, but this is tremendously helpful for me to finally understand how this all works, because it really hasn't made sense until tonight, so, thank you.
I'm actually wondering, that was gonna be another one of my questions of, and maybe Laura has an example that could be done a little bit better, of like, how parents are brought into this process? Does it, when a child is, the school thinks that he or she has a need for STEP services, at what point is the parent included and consulted in this, and how, how much are they a part of this?
Well, the typical way that students come to STEP is either through teachers, or in the EST process, the Educational Support Team. And that's when the groups of teachers and administrators get together. They talk about academics, but they also talk about behavior. And parents are invited to those meetings as well. So that's typically helpful. And it really depends on, like, when we think about STEP, it's not, as we talk about the top of the triangle, we're not only doing that top, we're also rubbing into tier two sometimes, and meeting with teachers and giving them some advice about certain things. But once we start getting like into, like, behavior planning, we're meeting with parents, we're very involved in the process.
For children, the majority of students who receive STEP services in a, in a more comprehensive way are in special education. And so usually these, well, I would say almost always, these discussions are done as part of the IEP process, where it can, you know, where sometimes, well, I don't think it gets too blurry, but there are students who are, who may have disabilities but are not eligible for special education, but receive accommodations and supports through a 504 plan or through an EST plan. And so each school has a pretty similar system for how we bring parents into the process. But parents are always part of the IEP process, so those decisions, you know, about those complex behavior plans and interventions and paraeducator support are done in conjunction with parents.
And only kids who have an IEP are participating in this support?
No, no, I, what I, right, there's students with 504 plans and EST plans who can also access.
But they all have to have some kind of a plan to be involved with this?
Yeah, well, I would say, yeah, there's, every once in a while, there's a.
Say, every once in a while, somebody else will get asked.
Right, it's not a law.
Right.
But it's, it's.
The norm.
It's the norm, it's most.
It's just like how it turns out, that it always ends up being people who have one of these other plaintiffs already.
Almost always, it's, that's almost always the case, but there are exceptions. Because we look at, we look at each kid in different ways. Okay, this child's not on IEP, this child's not on a 504, but this child needs something else. So we may, we figure out how to solve that, how to help that student, how to resolve that with the kid. Sometimes we get kids in, and this particular challenging could come in in a fourth grade, fifth grade, from another school, another school system. And, or sometimes they come to us from, they have not been in school, they've been, they've been in another state, but they've been in a program. And they wind up in our school, and then we have to quickly figure out, give them what we have, how we can best service that child. What's the best, the absolute best education, the best thing we can do for that kid. And sometimes it involves STEP. So we wouldn't say, well, sorry, that kid's not on IEP, we're not gonna help them. So we'll be flexible, but for the most part, most often, yes, the child's gonna be on IEP or 504.
Okay, 'cause I know in the BUHS meeting last, somebody was asking about this, right? And you said there's no qualifiers for this. Anybody can?
They were talking about PEAK and the program they're going to try to create at VAMS.
Oh, I thought they were asking about STEP.
Well, they're, they're using the term STEP at VAMS, but it's still to be created. So that's why.
You were talking, you were answering just to that one, right?
They don't, yeah, the only STEP, the only STEP programs in our, in the union are through in Bradtown and Guilford. And the one in Guilford, we helped him, like, we set that up, because we have standards that we want, similar to franchising. If you, you know, wanna open a Subway Sub, you, you have to use their bread and their menu. And with STEP, if you're going to call a STEP, then you have to do it our way. This is what works. You don't want people just taking it, it's, oh, we have a STEP program. But they're not following principles and the science, and doing it their way, that's, that's not, we got a copyright.
Okay, but even for this program, there isn't any qualifiers, but it just effectively happens to be that the kids who need these supports almost always also need IEP or 504 or EST plans as well?
Most often, generally speaking, yeah. If the qualifier is, is really the, you know, this is behavior, does a child have the behavior that warrants it? Qualifier is, is best for the kid. If this, if this was going to, our best shot at helping this student, if that's the case, then we're going to give them right to the gun.
So if we think about like early intervention, which Greg was referring to, MTSS in terms of early intervention for academics as well as behavior. Thinking about kindergartners, for example. Kindergartners come in and they, very few will have an IEP, and very few will have a 504. And so we're getting to know them, what do they need, we're doing assessments. And then we, a teacher will bring them to EST, the Educational Support Team. And so at EST, in order for a teacher to bring a child's name up, they have to contact the families and say, "We're, I'm bringing your child to EST for these particular reasons." They do an interview with the parent, asking standard questions, and then invite the parent to the meeting. Some parents come, some parents don't. Let me know how it turns out, I support, you know, whatever's going on. And so from that, EST will be action steps, whether it's for academic services, academic interventions, or behavioral services, or even a combination of both. So from, in order, at least at O'Grove, but I think it's, because it came from STEP, so I think it's pretty common that in order to even, for me to like approve my BCPA to go in to do an observation, an informal observation in the classroom, that's coming through EST. So the child's name had to come up to EST. So a teacher just can't go and grab my BCPA, you know, and always say, hey, I want you to come in, you know, in my classroom, I'm really having problems. You know, there's a process for that. And, and parents are aware of what that process is. And then usually from EST, especially as behavior, there's a lot of times there are follow-up meetings and, you know, depending on how involved it is, it could be that we're changing plans quite frequently. And informal plans, not the behavior, you know, social behavioral assessment plans, but really informal different interventions that we might be doing. And so those are meetings that could happen with the parent, with the team, on a pretty regular basis.
STEP is not the first thing that's tried. I, I think that's a pretty fair statement. Like, again, thinking about that triangle, you know, there are all these, there are all these behavioral interventions that teams try before, you know, an official referral would be made to, you know, the people in STEP. And usually that goes via the school's educational support team, if that makes sense.
And again, it mirrors what we're doing academically as well. So students, you know, are plugging along, again, in kindergarten, and it's like, oh, they're still not recognizing their letters, they still don't know all the letter sounds. So we're putting interventions in place, you know, and double-dosing, they're getting it in tier one, but then they're doing like the, that tier two, so they're now working in small groups to get it repeated over and over and over again. And so we follow that, we track that with data, and we're tracking it with behavior, and, and then we see whether or not there's a need for further assessment. And that's oftentimes even the path for leading towards making referrals especially.
I'm also wondering, like, I know in the regular classrooms, that the relationship that the student have with the teacher and with their peers is a big piece of managing their behavior. What kind of stuff is done within these outside-of-classroom situations around relationship building? Or, do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, no, I think you're hitting on really the ultimate goal of STEP, which is to transfer all of these things to the mainstream class. We don't, that's, that's one of the more tricky things that we do, which is helping teachers take over all. The, we want the student in their classroom, we want the teacher being the final word on what goes on in that classroom, as the educational leader of that classroom. So we call that generalizing behavior, and that takes time, but that's really the goal. I, I'm a, as I said at the beginning, the loss of social connection and inclusion is, I mean, I said it this morning in a case that I was at, that you can, you know, have difficult time reading, but if you don't feel like you have friends and feel connected in the school community, that's gonna play worse on you over time than just being behind and reading. Feeling as part of the community, feeling included, feeling like it's a place where you have supports and connections is most important. So how we do that, it really depends on the situation. Typically, it's, it just doesn't, kids don't go from STEP right into their mainstream class, and it's all over. It's usually a fading procedure. Like, if we're doing check-ins in the STEP room, we turn them into check-ins with the teacher in the morning. Teacher makes time at lunch to meet with the student. That's a very general, sort of, simple way, but you really hit on one of our really very, very important goals of STEP.
We, just to piggyback on that, I know, just thinking through the years of the types of interventions we've done, you know, sometimes for whatever reason, a child doesn't feel socially connected in their classroom, but they do feel a connection with, you know, Greg or myself, or, you know, the BCPA or the intensive case manager working in STEP. Because, you know, STEP, the, coming out and getting reinforcement in another place is, is what makes kids, that particular kid tick. So we've crafted interventions, I know, in the past where we might, you know, have as an incentive that if a child does X, Y, and Z, they get to come down at 10 o'clock and play checkers with me. And then, you know, I build on that relationship, or Greg builds on the relationship, and it's the behavior coaching, the social emotional coaching. You know, I'm so proud of you for taking your break when you were asked, you're really nailing it today, and, and working on those social connections. And then the next step in the procedure might be to have the child invite a friend to come and play that game with us, because it's special, and we really jazz it up for, for the kids, and they get, you know, a lot of reinforcement, social reinforcement for doing that. And then, you know, the next step in the intervention might be to then fade that special game to be with a classroom teacher and a friend. And so that eventually, we're really trying to make the classroom teacher and the classroom environment the place where the child is getting that social emotional reinforcement, if that makes sense.
And many times, there's a, there's a, there's a term in ABA called behavioral cusp. These are behaviors that you learn that lead to tons of other behaviors. And so, learning new things, it's not like, it's not like this one step at a time. Sometimes you learn like a keystone behavior, and it opens up the world for you. And we see that happen, where a kid will be at a certain age, and then all of a sudden, they will just not wanna be in STEP anymore. Because they've started doing something that leads to all these new behaviors. And, for example, the example I'd like to give is we have a student, there's no one with us, who's non-verbal. And we taught him to.
He moved, he's still with us.
He's still with us. We taught him to ask, to ask to be pushed on a swing. And that was a huge thing for him, like, he was non-verbal, didn't talk at all. And so he was out on the swings, and we were pushing him, and then, you know how it goes, you're out there with other staff members, you turn around, start talking to another staff member. And then another kid came up to him while he was on the swing and said, "Hey, give me a push." Now, we'd never taught that student to give anybody a push. But all of a sudden, he got off his swing and started pushing this other kid. And this happened independent of any teaching that we did. So that's, like, that's a behavioral, behavioral cusp. It leads to all these other things. Now he's having a social engagement with a kid, you know, totally incidental, like, out in the world, and that's what we wanna be teaching. So that happens, it typically happens by fourth grade, fourth, fifth grade. Kids start becoming more successful in their classroom, and the value of me just goes down. You know, coming to see me used to be like me giving you all these positive things and saying how great you were, or really just, you know, just the relationship doesn't have as much meaning as the relationships of the peers in the classroom. And that's what we're shooting for. And I just look at, like, I can't speak to all the schools, so I don't know all the data for all the schools, but if we were, if I were to break it down for you, and if you want me to come back and break it down, you would see that by fourth and fifth grade, we typically have one or two kids in STEP, and the rest have all aged out and have become part of the mainstream. So it's, we do tons of work in the lower grades, and then hopefully pays off, that's sort of the goal.
Well, so we've gone a little longer than expected, and it seems to be our methodology in our board meeting. But thank you, Greg and Shelley, that was really helpful, I think, to everybody. But thank you, Greg and Shelley, that was really helpful, I think, speaks to everybody. And-
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, thanks. And if you have any questions, you can always email me, I mean, we, and we do have all the data you want, just it's not all here. I knew we had a half hour. And we could talk about the data here for quite a long time. Anyway, I'm just going to step in front of you here.
And you're all welcome to stay, we're going to go on to things that might not be quite as interesting to you. If somebody is headed towards the teenagers in the other room, could you, if you, if all the children are gone, you could tell them they can leave? Otherwise, they don't know what, how long to stay, they weren't, but if you're all staying and there's kids in there, they'll stay on. Okay, so I guess we could continue on. On our agenda for tonight, we have a couple things that, I, I keep pushing aside these administrative reports, but I'm, we're at 6:15. I'd like us to be done at 7:00. So, I think I'd like to jump to new business and then come back up, if that's okay again. So, the second thing on here is discussion on in-kind levels at EES, and I wanted to make sure we weren't breaking any open meeting laws, because we've gotten a document, we have posted that to the website, but we got a document on the in-kind and what you had submitted. And then you had responded with a really great response to me, and then, did you bring it, or do you want me to pull it up? Perfect, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that we had that on public markers, so that everybody knew exactly what was going on. To preface that, the in-kind is what is given by parents and community that matches the federal dollars for the early Head Start and the Head Start program. And we are traditionally, and all the time I've been in the board, struggling to get the amount that we need for various reasons, and once again, we're struggling this year.
We are.
And you had a great response, Deb, if you wanted to share that.
Okay.
We're waiting, Deb. Did you have something you wanted to say?
Is that about January 4th, Deb?
Well, she has her response over there.
Okay, so, do you want me to read what I, what I wrote? Is that what you want?
Probably, yes.
Okay.
And then you could add in anything you want.
When Head Start began in 1965, it was a half-day program that was heavily reliant upon volunteerism, namely, parent volunteerism in the classrooms, mostly mothers who were at home. This was before welfare reform, when those on welfare were not forced to work. Head Start was developed not only as an opportunity for children to get a Head Start, but also as a way to train parents, mothers primarily, to become knowledgeable about child development and to become volunteer teacher aides in the classroom. The Head Start model was predicated on the idea that there would be a high level of volunteer labor in the classroom. As a program born from the Democratic War on Poverty initiatives, Head Start was not, for many years, bipartisan supported. Therefore, for many years, the in-kind non-federal share requirement was paramount in gaining approval by demonstrating that communities were willing to roll up their sleeves and contribute. Volunteerism and donations to support the program cemented, it was valued by communities, making it difficult to cut funding, which is what happened to many other War on Poverty programs. When welfare reform kicked in during Clinton's administration, things changed, namely, the parents who were able to go to work did. I saw three things shift at that point. Parents who were able to work did. Parents who were now working or in training or in school consequently were not available to volunteer in the program. Those who did not go to work or move, or could move towards self-sufficiency were typically suffering with mental health issues. Thus began the steady decline to having Head Start enrolled children and families with the greatest deal of need and dysfunction. Those more typical families moved on and out of Head Start. At the same time, states and federal budgets increased childcare funding, which, when matched with Head Start dollars, created opportunities for full-day programming to meet the needs of working families. Poor working families, and you guessed it, also provided state funds for the non-federal in-kind match. Since that time, our country has seen the need and importance of quality early care and education, and the dollars and higher qualification teacher requirements follow. Because the federal government is now ponying up more childcare dollars, which flows through the states, we cannot count that as non-federal match. And the feds realize this. The feds have finally lightened their insistence on the requirement for our in-kind match, and over the past five years, I have seen a dramatic shift in their tolerance, actually expectation that we may not be able to make our in-kind match requirement each, each year. When Senator Kennedy was our senator, when Ted Kennedy was our senator, he became, he began an initiative to try and remove the in-kind requirement from Head Start, but that fell by the boards. Our National Head Start Association has proposed to take this on when the political climate is ripe, but at this point, we are happy to stay under the radar. So, in short, I have, I said two points, but I actually made three, three points to make. One, we are doing much better this year than we have the past two with meeting our full in-kind non-federal share requirement. Two, Head Start has been around for 53 years, and we have proven our worth, it's high time to eliminate these requirements. And three, I don't think there's cause for alarm.
Any concerns, comments by the board, or mail?
Sounds good to me.
And did we hear back from the folks with the requests? Were we denied approval, or what?
No, and we heard you would hear as well, so we have not yet heard. But I have, I'm not overly concerned at this point. And I, and I am back in communication with our point person in Boston, she's been out for a couple of weeks, and so I'm sure we'll be catching up about this very soon.
Okay, the other parts under new business, actually, if you look at F, review work plan, then C, D, and E go underneath that, and kind of G. I don't know if we all have the work plan, because I didn't reset that out, but I'm, I'm a little concerned that we are off of our work plan, because we keep adding things. So, and I'd, I'd like it if we were actually on a two-hour meeting idea, as opposed to three, four, five. So, the latest I have on our work plan, let's see, sorry, is November 2nd, although I updated on November 15th. Anybody, usually Dave has anything that's been updated, but I'll pull that. So, we're at January 17th, Behavior and Discipline. The next meeting is, and we, we didn't do yet what should have been done this last meeting, which was what we're writing for the report?
Yes.
Which I didn't get to all of you, so we need to discuss that yesterday. That has to be turned in by the 25th, I think. So, February 7th is Preparation for Town Rep Meeting. We talked about possibly the social curriculum, citizenship, critical thinking. And then we also have down here, Review of Curriculum, Eureka ECRI, if necessary, after Green Street Academy and Oak Grove presentations.
Which it is after all of those.
I wish Dave were here, because he has that, he was the one who was very concerned about that, in the report back on that.
What's the presentation again?
Well, at one point, we were talking about having a review of curriculum in general, and I think Dave was worried or wanted to know, we've spent money on updating various curriculums, and wanted to hear back from you all on whether you thought that that was working, and I think that's what he wanted.
I think the presentation reference was like that we would do this after we had had the ones that like focused on each school, which we did already.
Would, yeah, if it were still necessary, or if Dave had all of his questions answered.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Right, exactly.
If needed, after having seen all those. So, maybe we should wait and see if he feels that he's up to par and all that.
I'm not sure if the board has really heard much about social curriculums at each school, although you hit that in your presentation. You had some, I guess. I think this was on here too, because in planning for the town meeting, every year, somebody stands up and says, "Well, this is all well and good that we teach our kids how to read and write, but what do you teach them socially?" And so, I think that was why we kind of asked, so that we'd be prepared. There is no other meeting in February, and then the March 7th meeting is the only one remaining before our meeting, Preparation to the Town Representatives. And at the March 7th meeting, we should have the report from counselors and social workers on the well-being of students in school. So, I guess that would kind of go along with social curriculum, citizenship, critical thinking. And our thought of putting that on March 7th was that perhaps that would be something that we'd want to have presented to the town meeting reps as well.
Yeah, I found that to be, to be, because we had that meeting right before the town representation last year, and that was-
And we pulled from some of that.
Yeah.
What if we take this February 7th, Social Curriculum, Citizenship, Critical Thinking, and we put that down on March 7th, and that's all encompassing, and the report from the counselors and social workers? Does that feel like it goes together?
Yeah.
And that would leave us a February 7th meeting that just talks a little bit about Preparation for Town Rep Meeting and catches up with anything else, like normal stuff that we haven't done.
And also, you asked me to remind you about the training for the board. And I don't think this would be a really long discussion, but there's just two proposals that I requested, and, and I have one of them so far, so I'm hoping by February 7th I'll have both, and we can just have a brief discussion of what we-
So, you want to do that at that time?
If we're hoping to have the person scheduled to come in April or sometime like that, I think it would be good to-
So, I'll put that in the discussion of, what do we call that type of training?
Diversity Training.
Diversity in general.
Been labeling it so far, but I'm sure in the training, we'll probably learn the inadequacy of that title.
Do, do we feel like we need a review of the curriculum for Eureka and all of that? Administrators?
I don't feel like I need a review of that.
Thank you, Ian.
I mean, it's, I guess in order to respond to that, I mean, it's, Eureka for Math is, you know, pre-K through six, K through six is a monstrous program, so what would, would the board want like to know? That's-
So, I think that's really a David question.
Yes, I mean, I'm guessing that the, the purpose of his question was about, as the schools have chosen to switch over to this other kind of curriculum, are we seeing improvements or, you know, benefits?
Did we like what we paid all this money for, I think was the basic question. And the 1%, he had something to do with 1%.
I think we touched on that pretty thoroughly in our presentation around the work that we've been doing with Eureka.
I do think that too.
Yeah.
And I think Academy did the ep grade, they talked pretty in-depth about what it looks like and what they're doing.
All right, so I'm going to take it off, and I will send an email to Dave and say-
Another thing is just the board's information, we're at different places, I think, with, with Eureka Math. A lot of the training that Green Street is doing this year, for example, with a trainer by the name of Judy Lawrence.
Judy Maynard.
Judy, sorry, Judy Lawrence, not a trainer. Judy Maynard is booked next year for Institute Services at Academy. So, you guys started, actually, a year before we did with Eureka Math. So, yeah, when you change your, change your curriculum, it's more than just, oh, I'll call the old books and come the new and hit the ground running. It's, it's a huge undertaking, that before you're completely implemented, it takes at least two years.
Would you say when you get your mark?
Absolutely. Two to three years before you're, you feel like you're really doing it to tell, and so we're, I think we're all at different places that have been through that, that process. Probably, we could say, well, yes, Eureka Math, this is great, looking at the results, definitively like that, it's, it's not that type of thing.
Going with a new program is like the, is like the easy thing to do, to, to pick another program. The hard work is, once you have that program, how to make it work within your school structure. And that's where we're at right now.
We also talked about scheduling a report from student leaders. Did we have any thought that we might want a report from student leaders at our town meeting presentation? I think that it's nice to have the town reps hear from students, but I don't want them to feel overly-
Boy, I think that's overwhelming, it's a harder one.
Yeah, if it's already really long, tends to be a long night.
Well, we have a plan what we're going to talk of.
Yeah.
It could be really short.
We might, Julie hadn't followed to that meeting as well, more than during the planning.
Yes, that's good.
We, we have the video, you know, if we tape and get the students' permission, maybe we can show parts of it when-
When I, when you guys say hear from town, hear from the student leadership, were you thinking of a half an hour presentation, a five minute presentation? Did you have thoughts exactly?
I would say five to 10 minutes per school.
Yep.
So, maybe 20 minutes.
Because we, we could fit that in on February 7th, is what I was just thinking. And then if there's something out of that that we want to have as a presentation, we could take it off and we'd see TV.
I think that's too quick.
Yeah, it's too quick for them. They need more time to prepare themselves.
Well, I think, I think when you're dealing with, you know, with students, I mean, they're still, they're still kids, and so, when we have, I don't know, I mean, you have your meetings, they're still kind of swirling, so you're trying to get something kind of organized, it takes, you know-
And next week's not even a full week anyway.
...of school. And we're all into sports right now, and they have-
Okay, so that just, that just means that they can't come until, I mean, we don't have another week, another meeting in February. March 7th is already too full. Report from counselors, social workers on well-being of students in the school, social curriculum, citizenship, and critical thinking. March 21st is the presentation. Then April 4th, this Continuous Improvement Plan's current budget status. April 18th is no meeting. May 2nd is the technology plan review. May 16th is not, doesn't have anything. Empty.
That would be good for the student presentations, because it gives them more time for the-
Or maybe on the 2nd too, that's, it's not like you would take a full meeting with technology.
Jill, do we have a, the Joint Policy Council and Board meeting scheduled?
No, but there's a June 6th that I was thinking might be.
Okay.
Anyone want that?
Yeah.
So, let's do student leadership, I think I'm going to leave it on the 16th where there's nothing.
Yep.
And June-
June 16th, yes.
June 16th.
EE, EE, the Policy Council and School Board Joint Meeting is on June 6th. I do not feel like we're on stage.
Say five to 10 minutes during school on that night?
Yes.
For the student leadership?
Yes.
And we want to, I really want, maybe we don't all want, that's a question for you all, I guess, that I would like to look at the SPAC scores and compare it, because we looked very briefly at just a couple classrooms, and I think it's incumbent upon us to look at those.
We'll, I presented this year's results, the last year's results, last year's results.
I mean, during your presentation?
Do that again, show them to your calendar.
Yeah, but they were like on their own, and I think they didn't compare with other years or something, so I-
We showed you the last two years compared, we've been doing SPAC to three, the first year, you know, the lack of better word, didn't count, the two years that counted, I showed you the two, went into-
You just can't really compare it with the ones before that, because this is the kneecap test.
And they weren't, they were on their own, without being compared to the rest of the district or the rest of the state, yes?
Correct.
So, that's kind of what I need, is, you know, how are we doing in comparison to the district, how are we doing in comparison to the state relative to each other?
Can we put that in the, in Continuous Improvement Plan, because looking at data is what we have to do, and we're creating our Continuous Improvement Plan.
So, that would be April 4th? When?
The other thing I just want to say about the data, I think it can be dangerous to just compare data.
Well, that's why you're gonna lead it, lead us through it. And I, I think that's fair, but I think we do have a role here of looking at data.
Yeah, I agree. But I just referenced that, you know, the article that Robinson before, in December, I thought was a really great article about data, and the emphasis on a growth model is so important to keep on the forefront rather than, it could be dangerous to just compare schools with one shot of data.
We'll compare, we'll compare growth, we'll compare all sorts of things maybe. Water testing for radon and lead in locations besides Academy, I kind of got lost when we got done with that last time of when that was gonna happen.
So just for, for the record, to correct it, we tested the water, water, that's Boston water, we tested the water for lead in the water, then we tested for radon in the, we did test for radon in the water. We gave it in full town water.
Is there radon in the water as well?
Well, radon's a gas, I don't think it's something that's in water.
It is in water.
Oh, it is?
If you run it well, we'd have to test that as well, but we're not, so that's, we're in town water, which radon...
It's about the fixtures in the school for the lead, it's not, you can do it in the water supply.
Correct, so the lead in the water is from the fixtures in, in the solder. A lot of the older fixtures, like, like on the, on the faucets and the water bottles for towns, was made from chrome, which has lead in it, which no longer legal to sell it, but they're still in schools. And then the solder used to put copperheads together has high content of lead. So that's what the lead came from. The radon was come from, it's a gas in the ground.
So my, my confusion was that the information that I was sent as chair, I, I asked them, and I thought they said that everybody was going to be tested eventually, and that you, at Academy, was just the first school.
It did say that it was a pilot program, but I didn't see anything that said, and then we're gonna do the rest of your town next.
I think it's because I asked directly, it wasn't like said to you.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to go back and look, but maybe I'm confused all the way around, but...
No, I was under the same assumption, that we were a pilot, meaning other, that all schools, I thought all schools in the state were going to be tested. And what I found out is, since then, is no, these schools that were tested were tested and other schools, you're on chrome.
Which is, okay, then as a board for three schools, how can we say we're only gonna test one school?
Well, again, our assumption was it was a pilot.
Well, okay, so it's fine, now we just need to do it.
Yeah, can we pursue hiring a company to test the other two schools? I think we need to get some pricing.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Can we do that?
Yeah, but I mean, that's where you're going with this.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Our, our water was tested for, we had to do that because of pre-K, in order to do licensing, and so we don't care for, for lead in our water.
So you're, you're...
So we still need to test for radon though.
Right.
And I know, living over here, it is popular in this neighborhood to have radon.
So you haven't been tested for lead at Green Street? So can we do that? How do we do that?
I think we would ask Frank.
Yes.
If he could, how we would do that, if we would put out something for bid, having people, contractors...
I don't know, is this a $10,000, it's not a $10,000 thing, right?
Just for the testing, I would think it would be that much, but if we need remediation, and then it might be very expensive.
Yeah, but I think we, we need remediation, we have to.
You have to think, if you're testing for lead though, you have to, you have to test every single sink, every single fixture that, that...
So, so the first step would be is if the board agrees that this is something we want to do, we ask Frank to do it. So that would be our direction, to please ask Frank for help.
And Jerry, were they, when they did the lead testing for here, did they test every fixture in every classroom, or just in the pre-K, the ones that the pre-K kids would interact with?
Uh, they were, um, pre-K specifically, but then there's also another, one other location, I think, I can't remember exactly what it was.
So I think we need to complete that.
We need to complete that.
But not of, not of the fixture.
So we need to complete Oprah, we need to do Green Street for lead testing, and then radon testing for Oprah and Green Street.
Deb, do we need to do anything for...
Yours are...
I wanted to, just wanted to ask the question.
Yes.
And that's what I thought, but...
So it's just, we have literally like no insulation in our house, and we still tested that for radon.
We can update on our radon again, all of our fixtures that were emitting lead have been removed, so we, all 49 of our tested areas, tested fixtures are safe, all of our water is good. And radon, our two highest areas will be relegated Monday and Tuesday next week, this is no school for children, so we're able to do that. We were, we contracted another company to come in and do more sophisticated electronic testing, and, and based on that, now we're, we're doing those two rooms. It takes three days to do two rooms, so with the amount of rooms, it's gonna take three months to do the testing completely at Academy.
So maybe this is gonna be a phenomenally expensive thing to do.
Well, it's not terribly expensive to do the testing. It just takes a little bit of time, it's, looks like a camera sits in a room and it records, it records data for two days, and then that has to be downloaded into a computer, and they analyze it, and then they, then they move it, we move it, then it goes to, to other spaces. There's really no, there's really very, very few commercial operations that are serial testing, just commercially, so this company is a lot, you can find their own, they have two of these units. So, but we are correcting those two spaces that are hot. What this shows you, the first test, you know, is this charcoal, and it sits there, and it's, it's solid and static, it's a carbon test. This test shows how the radon changes throughout, over the course of 48 hours, so that when, for example, what we learned is when these spaces are closed, like on the weekend or at night, the radon level is high, of course, when it's being used during the day, which is what we care about most, it's, it's much lower, because then the heat is on, running, ventilation systems working and so forth, so, so it really significantly reduces the risk of exposure to children and to staff, because we know the, we know the levels are much lower, but we are correct with this. This gives you an average reading over the course of 48 hours, and then it gives you specific times as well, so it's much more useful.
Can I ask, on the readings that you already had, the, what were the levels in the high rooms?
Um, the highest we had was 7.8.
Okay, and four is the, under four, or is it below the target?
Four, um, four is considered the threshold, if you have four or above, you want immediate.
Okay. But you're hoping to get it down below, like two or something like that, with the remediation?
Um, well...
Is that put in the letter?
Yeah, I mean, the, there's a difference too in both lead in the water and radon in terms of what the state and federal government, or what the EPA and the state want, state is much restricted in terms of their recommendation, but four is considered combined whole, four is the point above that, you want to get any work, and it's the same thing in the school. So we're, won't, I, we can tell you after, next week, and now we tested new sites, how the numbers are down to.
Okay. Oh, so they can do a test that quickly after, after the remediation?
Well, again, it's a two day, this electronic thing is a two day, it's a two day, it's been replaced with two days, so we have, so we can move it, you know, if there were two days, we move it to, move them to two new locations, we would move it to, to the, the corrective locations, to see how effective it's been. No radon company will guarantee that they'll eliminate radon, they signed a contract, and there's development, but it hasn't been, you know, researched, or the literature says that they've been quite successful.
Okay, so that takes care of that point. The one that didn't get on here, I think that we didn't, I think I forgot to tell her, or Barb didn't do that. I got confused at the end of our meeting last time too, perhaps it was just too long for my brain or something. The feasibility study that you guys, when you took off, on the budget, you took off the White House modular building for another year, and the administrator said you wanted to actually conduct a feasibility study, and that sounds great, but I didn't know what exactly you were gonna look at with the feasibility study.
So I think we're gonna look at multiple items, but I do think that the principals need to meet with Frank and me and think about all aspects of all schools. So what we do at one school will definitely affect what happens at the other schools as well. So looking at all of our options, space, projected students, class sizes, what, what we're thinking we need to do, looking into the future, so sort of long range projection.
And Wendy, would you look at all that, Wendy, break it to the board, in another year, or before next year's budget, I mean, Wendy, what's the timeframe?
I have no idea how much a feasibility study would cost, so I think we would need to talk together to see what it is exactly we're looking for, and then we'd have to find out if we can afford it in next year's budget, or if we have to budget for it next year to happen. It seems like budgeting for it next year puts it off for one more year, which I think we need, I don't like that idea either.
And you, you all feel like you have to hire somebody to do feasibility study, you can't...
I am not done, maybe, looking at Andy, who's got the most experience here, I don't know if he's gone through this before or not.
That's loud, nice way of saying, I'm male leader.
I thought it was very fun.
Um, I'm not sure, I mean, it's good, it's, like anything now, I mean, there's the procedures, doing feasibility studies and expected outcomes and so forth, that I don't think any of us is that experienced with, so...
I've done a feasibility study in a career, and it can be, it can be expensive, and it can be very far reaching, it depends on the parameters that we want, and so there can be a projection about population, and about shifts in society, and how that impacts our needs. And the way that that information is gathered is through talking to community members, having forums, doing research, so it can go to that extent.
So I...
I also, sorry.
I was just thinking, as a board member, what I was looking, or hoping when you said feasibility study, what, what, I don't know what the word feasibility study really means, just put that out there. But what I would be interested in knowing, I guess I come from the Act 46, looking at all that data and those numbers, the decrease in student population, at the same time I hear from all of you, and the increase in needs, and I know we've expanded into doing some different student populations, like the death population that requires a little bit of different space needs as well. So I'm interested in knowing whether we can, you know, what is our projection of students? Is there a way to adjust the space needs that we have? And we have three buildings, but we have less kids. So is there a way to move kids around that makes sense? And to me, I don't know that that requires hiring anybody special, I don't know that that requires forums with the community or any of that. And I was thinking a really solid nuts and bolts, you know, how does this work?
I'm sorry, you need to come here.
No, that's it.
I think moving kids around is a loaded issue. So if we had a dialogue with kids, with taxpayers, with parents, or, or folks who, who have children or want to have children that live in the neighborhood, then we're going to talk about that kind of movement.
Well, to be clear, I'm, I'm saying that that would be the discussion of whether that might be an answer.
Right, exactly, the discussion, and getting a vote in calls. It's gonna have to be an open meeting where we, we advertise and people know about it.
But wouldn't we first want to talk about it as administrators and or board, saying, gee, does this even make sense, before we throw it out to public? That, that's my first step that I was thinking of, was what, what the timeline would be for that. And I, I hear you, Andy, I think you're right, that yes, moving people is hugely, you couldn't throw people up in arms, and I'm not meaning to do that in any way, because I don't know that it really can happen, but is, without thinking about it and looking at it, how do we know if we're using things to its most efficient way?
But I think there, this whole thing was spurred by the idea that Academy needs to replace a building that they have currently outgrown, the space that they're in at this moment, so...
No, it's spurred because the building is past its time.
Right, the building needs to go.
Not that it's been outgrown, because the population at Academy has not gone up in the last 10 years, it's gone down.
But when I'm in the school, it just seems like there's a lot of stuff that's happening in things that used to be closets, that are, I mean...
I agree with that.
Use wise, the school does not have enough space as is.
I agree with that.
So that's why they were thinking, should we just build another thing to house the same thing that's already housing, or should we make something that can fit these other things in it? I mean, that was the reason that we said, let's delay and, and study this to see what we can do.
Well, I, I agree with all of that, but at the same time, I feel like we also have a significant decrease in, in number of students. So is there a way to make that work better? For instance, if we, and people are gonna now kill me at this point on, but if you say that every classroom is 20 kids, and we, like, right now, we've acknowledged that this year, 2017, 18, we could have had two less teachers if we would have combined classrooms for third and sixth grade all the way through the three schools. So my, my question is, is that the type of thing that you all are hoping to look at? Because I'm hoping you are. And just, I'm not proposing that that's the ideal answer, I don't even know.
Well, that could be part of it, but another part of the conversation is, do we want preschools in all the elementary schools?
That's another huge question.
And you actually own four buildings, because you have Canales Street too.
Right. And that little S B building.
So it's, it's hard to imagine those conversations, we could, we could have a conversation about, you know, about those as administrators, because we don't need an open session. Public isn't invited to our meetings. We can have confidential conversations at administrative meeting, at a certain level, and not about the public. Okay? But I think if you go to a board level, and you're gonna sit here, you're gonna have that conversation, it's gonna be on TV, and people are gonna hear about it, and they're gonna say, what the heck, what are you doing? You didn't, you didn't make this public, always in our, always in our agenda, but people are gonna, so right away, you're gonna be behind the ball, because people are gonna say, well, you, you already started this, and you didn't, you know, you didn't invite it to public, you didn't make it known. And right away, the first thing you gotta do is overcome that perception that the board was trying to do something without, without community input. So I'm gonna advise against that.
Well, but I, don't the administrators need to meet first?
I feel like that's the first step, we need to meet, we need to talk about, so what is it that a feasibility study is, and what would we want to look at here? And you've said some things, class size, pre-K, our space, the, the White House space, we need to decide what is it we want to look at, bring that to you and say, here's what we're thinking of when we do the feasibility study, are there things that you think we're missing? And in that time, we can look to see, is it something we can do ourselves, is it something we can do by sending out surveys, is it something that we have to hire someone for? But until we've talked and figured out what it is exactly we mean by feasibility, I, I don't...
Well, I like the second half of what you said too, that I, I do think this is a board discussion as well. I don't want to overstep, that all of you know more about a lot of things, most everything than I do. But it, it is, we're supposed to be up here representing the community, and the concerns, you know, there are on all sides, whether the kids are, you know, being uprooted and thrown about, that's a concern for the community, but it's also a concern on the taxpayer side, and are we being efficient, and how we are doing? It's that, those same two questions that I put out there all the time. Are we providing the best education that we can to our kids, and are we doing it at the best possible price for the taxpayer? And so I, I'm ratified to hear a lot of the ideas, and I think that we're all agreeing on it. You guys are gonna talk and come up with some ideas, and then come back to the board with, this is the type of thing that we're looking at, what else does the board think we might want to look at? And then, yes, Andy, you're absolutely right, it's a community discussion. And then yes, Andy, you're absolutely right, it's a community discussion, but I do think that some guidance, I mean, we can't just throw it out to the community saying, we're thinking, we don't even know what we're thinking of. So I don't, I don't want to start with the community screaming that you're, you're doing it, that we don't know what we're talking about. We're just talking about, are we using our space correctly? Is there a way to do it better for the kids and for the taxpayer? That's, that's the only question. Thank you, I was confused after last meeting. So then the next thing I have on here is the report to town meeting reps along those same lines, what are the main points that we want to hit? I know we've talked already about the pre-K program, why we wanted it and how it's going. I imagine that they want to hear something about Act 46, that what we sent up, I wasn't going to spend a lot of time in the report on that, but I think it has to be acknowledged. And the last two things I thought of is that I usually say something about explaining the budget and the concerns that we had. Basically for us this year, it's, we didn't want to, we wanted to do zero tax increase. And there are two new positions, right? That's social worker and the technology. There are only one, it was new, new positions always...
Well, there's, or, the pre-K, the pre-K era, um, it's, it's really changing of funding. That position is already here in the school this year, but that was going to be funded differently, so it has to be added to the budget as a new position, but that position is actually, um, existing in the pre-K program. So are we doing what you have operation for town reps?
I have to write the meeting, or I have to write the report before January 25th. So this is what's going on in the report, and social worker for Green Street. And it's Green Street, oh, sharing the social worker or mainly?
I think it's mainly Green Street, um, there's some flexibility.
And then do we want to say anything about goals for next year? Just, I mean, we could mention that we're...
In the report?
Yeah. And we can, we can mention that we're looking at feasibility and just looking at that, right?
Do you want to put in something about the trainings that you've had?
Yeah, I think we should put in about that.
The transgender and you're going, you're looking to have a diversity training?
Anything else? Don't forget on that transgender, because we need to put that on the work plan. Anything else?
I was wondering, um, and you might be like, no, Rob, I think don't go there, but when we had that meeting at Green Street a few months ago and Andy brought up the really examples of traumatic situations that are happening at school, I don't want to make it like a negative report, but I just feel like there is a reason why it's so expensive to educate a small, declining population and it's not just that, uh, you know, we're losing the economy of scale, but that the needs of the community are severely increasing and I just feel like that should be mentioned.
Well, and we can also mention how, how staff is able to, we're, we're able to not have students going outside the district now and the money, you know, if we can get the dollars, that that's...
I mean, some of this is the same stuff that was said last year, but I think that's okay. I don't think we have to like reinvent every year if it's like one of the same reasoning behind our, our budget, then it makes sense to talk about those reasons again.
Very good, I'll put that in too. So administrators, anything else you want me to write? You guys write a report on your own too, but anything else you want from the board? So then I will write this and send it to you board members in the next couple of days and then you give me any comments and then we'll change it around as needed. So going back to the work plan, the transgender training that we had, we said we were going to come back to looking at that at some point, we don't have that on our work plan. So maybe after the diversity training would be a good time to talk about. Both of those, once we have both the training?
Okay.
But we don't know when we're doing the diversity training.
Right, that's why I was kind of hoping we could leave that May 16th meeting open, but I don't even know if the person, which we don't know which one it's going to be, would have that data available, but...
All right, so I'm going to put down diversity training, question mark, and then after diversity, just so we don't lose it, after diversity training, um...
That's a note to schedule, then the thing that I further.
Talk about the gender training next steps. Okay. So that takes us back to the regularly scheduled agenda. That's, I think that's it on the new business, except for next agenda items that we pick up. So the only other things that's left for five minutes, no, it's seven o'clock right now, committee reports, administrative reports of any noteworthy accomplishments. Are there any things that, anything that needs action?
Jerry and I both have things.
Go ahead, Jerry.
I have two staff, um, stepping updates. Um, one is just for information for the board. It's a letter from my librarian and media specialist, Lexi Oliver. Excited to inform you that she is expecting, um, June 2nd, um, that she will continue to work until that delivery or shortly before, uh, planning on taking the first semester of 2018, 18th school year off to stay home with her child, um, returning in January. So it's one of the employment board that will be looking for, um, a long-term result for the beginning of the 2018, 19th school year and then whenever she goes out on return and we'll just fill in with a supplement for the rest of the school year. But I do need action on this next. Um, this is a letter, um, written to bile and myself, Andrew Davis. So I am writing to notify you that I've made the decision to retire from my position as itinerant, maybe there's that word, right? Uh, music educator for the Brownsville Town Schools as of June 3rd, 2018. I've been researching my retirement options over the last year and I have not come to this decision lightly. I maintain my current schedule of pre-K, sixth, music education in three schools, including Dover School in Windham Central. For quite a few years now and I am ready to apply my skills in some new directions. I've been doing this job in various configurations since 1985. My years of teaching in Brownsville have been incredibly satisfying, however, I am now feeling a combination of my age and a strong interest in pursuing interests I have postponed over these many years as a Vermont Public School Music Educator. I'm willing to help in any way I can to endure the continuity of the music programs that have been so well supported by the school staff, administration of Grove and Green Street Schools. Please let me know if there's anything I can do to contribute to this process. Sincerely, Andrew Davis.
Somebody to motion to accept a resignation with regrets.
So moved.
Seconded.
And a discussion, all in favor. Quite, that does lead me to a quick question, that you, we switched things around and I wondered how that was going with the music teachers, we haven't really asked to interact in on this.
Since the switch.
Yeah.
From my perspective, it's been going great.
Do we feel like the teachers are happier with only being in one school?
Well, our person's not great, I mean, she has nothing to compare it to. So Julie, who's at Green Street, was in two, uh, two schools last year.
Yeah, and I agree, we went from having three music teachers to basically one with Andy Davis one day a week, supporting our schedule. And the ability to, um, just invest in your community is much higher when you have people who are there every day. And it's much more difficult when you have, you know, three people, it worked well for many years, I'm not going to say it didn't. But it's difficult to build that community and that rapport when you have itinerants coming and going. So having, um, you know, a stable, that stable position has been a lot easier for communication, planning around school celebrations, um, just the fabric of the day-to-day life in the school has been really nice.
And so instrumental music's done naturally there, done at Academy?
Julie, um, does instrumental music for, um, Grove one day a week and the day that she's not at, um, at Green, she's here.
And Andy, you have instrumental and vocal being done by one person?
Yes, and that's, um, that's been great. Like, it's great having that one person, um, there five days a week, she's really become...
Part of the school.
Yeah, pretty much part of the school, um, but it's a good move entirely.
So then when the, the elephant in the room, when do the three elementary schools get together and play music together ever as a band? And is there an after-school music program now, like there used to be an extension?
We thought that was the elephant in the room, that's not what I thought you were going to ask.
Oh, really?
I had a different one in mind, yeah.
You can ask a different elephant. All right, so when, when do they come together and when do they?
Well, for our after-school program, we host jazz band at Green Street and we receive Academy and Grove students.
And Julie's doing that?
Yeah.
So there are still...
We still do strings, um, with all three schools and that's at Academy twice a week.
I think the other thing moving forward, Joe, I, I think the big goal would be, um...
This is the second one, what's here?
Right, for Julie to be full-time at Green and then Jerry having the ability to hire one person for three days a week, 60%. And I think once that is in place and we have three music teachers for Bracktown, it also presents an opportunity for some, you know, sort of terrific collaboration and time for them to work together and support each other's program.
And Academy still has a second music teacher for the younger grades?
One day a week, um, we have a woman who comes in, Rita Corby, who does kindergarten first grade.
So interesting to see how this all goes out.
So is that what you are going to pursue for filling this vacancy is to shift the Green Street duties over to Julie and then have, uh, the Grove just search for a, a hole and a person that will do all the days?
So how, how does that affect the budget? What are we at now and what's the move? How does that affect the budget? What are we at now?
That'll probably be...
Doesn't change anything.
No, she's already receiving full-time benefits, it's just that she goes between two places instead of staying at one.
Yep. Because right now my 60% is that budget, it's shared by two individuals and so it's still 60%.
So there's no effect to the budget, it's just making...
It'll probably make it easier for Julie and for doing a job search for a person to just come and do that.
And is there anybody else in the district that's at a part-time music position, that middle school is full-time?
We have throughout WSASU, um, some other part-time music teachers putting jobs together at a couple of different schools, some have districts, partially in the district.
And the, the middle school is full-time, right?
Middle school is between, it's BU6 actually.
Okay.
I have, uh, some action needed on an Act 250 impact questionnaire. Um, Brownsville Memorial Hospital will be demolishing the existing pavilion building and constructing a new, um, building.
What's a pavilion?
I don't know where the pavilion building is. The new building will have an expanded footprint, um, to modify by existing surgical facilities to meet current design standings. Building will be located between the main hospital and the Richards Building. These improvements are not expected to increase BMH patients or staff, however, there will be additional staff and patients for offices that are being relocated from 53 Fairview, so people will change places but not increase.
And we're not getting any more students?
I've said that there would not, this would not be an issue even if it did increase our students.
You're saying why don't we tell them that we have to have more students?
They have to bring it, they have to prove it.
They have to bring it, make sure what happens is going to be with some children out of our entire family.
I think this 250 thing is supposed to be like, we're going to be suddenly attacked by a whole bunch of kids and we're not ready for it, I think that's a point in the law, we need to switch this. We only want to approve things that bring more kids in. Will we do a motion?
A motion, yes, please.
What does the motion need to say that we approved the 250?
Yes.
The BMH?
Yep.
Request?
At request?
Yeah.
At 250 request? That's my move.
So, okay, second.
All in favor? I, I, here we go. Andy, they got it?
I have one other, yes. Um, a letter that I'm somewhat sad to read. It's with strongly mixed feelings that I submit this letter of my intent to retire from the principalship of Academy School effective June 30, 2018. After 12 years as principal of Academy, 25 years as principal in the WSASU and 34 years as principal overall, I believe it's time for me to step aside. I hope to continue to work in education in some capacity, sharing the things I have learned along the way. I want to thank you for your support of me, the Academy School and the children of our district. I hope that our paths cross again, cross again. Sincerely, Andy and Julie. So I would ask that you accept Andy's retirement.
I will not make that move.
Except with immense regret.
Yes, it's completely seconded.
All right.
That, that was two, 2020. I believe that the effective date is 2027.
All in favor?
I...
Well, you at least warned us it was proper.
Yes.
So on that note, we have skipped over on our agenda, Policy Council, Energy Committee, Act 46, finance diversity. Does anyone think there's anything urgent from any of those committees? And administrative reports, anything urgent? I'm sorry, guys, we, I feel like we are completely run amok on the scheduling of our program.
I'm just going to say, I'm sorry, did you just ask about committees?
Yeah.
Um, the, the Diversity and Equity Committee is hosting a winter performance showcase. It's next Thursday, January 25th, and there's going to be performances by kids from various schools in SU and the intention of the event is really to just get a lot of families to come and kind of have an opportunity to meet and make relationships across all the different schools, so that the kids performing is kind of like the carrot to get everybody to show up. So they're really hoping to get a robust attendance at that, um, so that all, everyone can just spread the bullhorn and, and encourage everyone to attend. It's going to be at the house.
It is.
And I brought flyers, do you guys have these already?
Yep.
I'll put them to, to Joan and...
What is the title of the event, Rob?
What's that? I was just looking for the title of the event, thanks.
Okay. I think I'm going to just ask for a German unless you really, I mean, I feel like we have completely shortchanged the administrators tonight on their administrative reports, I think it's two meetings in a row. But I, we went over the work plan, I promise, I'm trying very hard to get us back in track here, so hopefully a normal... Motion for a German? Movement?
Second.
All in favor? Fine, we're done.